Something to do with shooting. For shooting. Yes, all right, you are the winner, yes.
Nope, just masks.
Okay.
And that's the branding.
Yes, all right, that's what it is. Okay. That there was positive.
Oh, no, I didn't see that, must have come later.
Well, it got sent, Chris sent it to us, I assumed she would have sent it to everybody. Came yesterday afternoon. Why would she not send it to you guys? I mean, we were all together at whatever. They aren't saying.
Maybe that's why we didn't get it, maybe it was more of what she said.
I know, but we all ate lunch together, we all stood in line to fill our plates. Maybe Bob was.
I didn't.
Okay. Actually, there's two cases now for people that were there.
So are those, do you know who they are, like one of them, like if you know there's two, is it on the official site?
I know one of them is on the official side. But we were all, I mean, we were all in the amphitheater together, whatever. Okay. I'm just confused on why. Official business going on here. Good morning, everyone, I would like to call this meeting to order of the Cottington County Commissioners, it is Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. And I believe, I think I'll have Jamie lead us with Pledge of Allegiance.
What the pledge is to define the United States of America and consider republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just for notes of interest, if you have a cellphone, if you would silence that, and we are streaming live on YouTube. Item number two, call for public comment, if there are any individuals who would like to still call in, we will accept that for items that are not on the agenda, and that is for information only, and those two numbers are 882-6248 and 882-6297. Are there any conflict of interest items on the agenda for fellow commissioners?
No.
All right, item number four, action to approve the March 23rd, 2021 agenda. Motion by Van Duzen, second by Waterman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the minutes of the March 16th, 2021 meeting, motion by Johnson, second by Gable, any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Move on to monthly reports, and right away, we'll start with Emergency Manager Director Jamie, good morning.
Morning, Jamie.
How's the fire index this morning?
Low.
In the green, low. Well, it's been becoming busy down there as usual, but we'll start with that weather. Cottington County and surrounding areas are continuing to remain in that D zero category according to National Weather Service and the drought monitor, which means that abnormally drought conditions are still kind of persistent. With that said, in the last month, I performed snow water equivalent checks out of those last two systems that moved through our area, which produced just a little over a half inch of moisture between those seven inch snow and last week's five inches, five and a half in that area. Looks like our future forecast models are showing today, currently roughly about 4,800 or half inch rain predictability in our area, so hopefully that's going to provide for some much needed moisture. Currently, I got, I believe we have two counties in our region that didn't enact a couple of burn bans, but those are those north central South Dakota folks, and northwest still continues to remain pretty dry. So we'll continue and stay on top of weather. With that said, National Weather Service also announced, due to this concurrent pandemic situation this year, the Skywarn Basic Weather Spotter classes are going to be offered online. Seven of those free online classes will be starting next week, March 29th, through about the second week of April, and those are various times, a couple of afternoon sessions and evening sessions to accommodate folks' schedules. With that announcement, also came along the statewide severe weather awareness week is going to be April 20th through 24th, with statewide tornado drill that will occur from between 10:00 and 10:30 Central Time on April 24th. So we're getting ready and geared up for that, and we'll be hearing the sirens here in near future, next month. I continue to attend, we'll do some attendance and meetings. Virtual classes are still being offered by our state OEM partners, and along with our bi-weekly county partners call, that we partake in to keep tabs on folks and COVID numbers and such, how they're getting along, and really aren't hearing a lot back from complaint side of folks, so things are still moving in the right direction. Along with that, tomorrow, I am going to be attending a homeland meeting, homeland security meeting for grant approvals for our region, which got canceled a couple of weeks ago because of that snowstorm, so that was going to end up coming up tomorrow. With the announcement of, we continue to monitor Department of Health state numbers and county numbers as far as COVID and the pandemic. Currently, on that report yesterday, we still are in a run on that 100 to 110 active cases yesterday with one hospitalized statewide, I think we kind of moved back up into that 2,200 active cases throughout the state. We're showing roughly on the vaccination process on our side, moving right along, at about six, roughly 6,900 people have received first and second dose. Department of Health also announcing yesterday, if you've been paying with the media, that Phase 1E opened for all those essential and fire service workers and essential workers, and when you kind of look at that guidance on there, that Phase 1E is pretty much everybody, they show 227,000 people on the prediction side of Department of Health, but that it kind of includes every one of us, to be totally honest with you, when you really read into it. With that said, also last week, Prairie Lakes and our healthcare system, we've been working diligently with those folks on developing with our pod group, and what's come out of that is Thursday, starting this Thursday, and every Thursday, kind of forecast probably through June, roughly. Probability of July, I don't believe that in my own opinion, but we're looking at vaccinating 800 people this coming Thursday, and we will be using our Extension Center. This will be our first, first run, first event, it filled awful fast with an Eventbrite that our healthcare folks are using on the online process. Probability of maybe some call-in center stuff, we're still playing with that, and very preliminary yet, but we'll get it moved into the place if there was folks that don't have internet. But looking at our US Census Bureau stuff, I may have mentioned this to you before, there's roughly 90% of Cottington County residents that have internet access. So I think that forecast has looked pretty good, that people are catching on, that you can sign up online. So Thursday will be our day, starting this Thursday, and I've been working with Steve and Becky through the Extension Center, on lining those dates up on Thursday, we've had one little hiccup, but we're going to move a date up and work through that, so those folks will be offered, starting this week and every Thursday, and then kind of when the second dose things start coming into play, the plan is to maybe move into phase, or excuse me, vaccinating first and second doses all on that same time on Thursday's Extension Center.
So good, so if you did, if you did that, could you do 800 second doses and then 800 first doses?
Correct, that's kind of the plan, how we move forward, so. Could be a moving plan too, you know, as far as layout and structure, but this Thursday will be our good telltaker for how we're going to move forward with that.
I know some people that registered on that Eventbrite app, and they said it worked really well, it was really slick, easy to navigate, and really pleased with it, so I'm glad to see that we're doing this, it's a big deal.
Yeah, you know, as allocation allows, on the healthcare side, I don't get those numbers, but they, on our meetings, they're still kind of remaining low, you know, but until that ramp it really picks up, there could be a probability of bringing in more volunteers and assisting with that, maybe we can get it up to 1,000 or better, I mean, you know. So it is a mass vaccination event, but we're using kind of our pod group and our concept and organizational structure with healthcare kind of being the lead show of this currently, so.
Very organized, so it'll be interesting to see.
Yeah.
They went and visited when it was happening down in Brookings, so they have a good idea of kind of how things went down there as well, so.
Yep.
So when you say it's a regular pod concept, so, I mean, the kind of the different thing now, from what we envisioned in a pod, was that, you know, the involvement of the local healthcare providers as opposed to, you know, more state involvement, so is that kind of, that's kind of the difference?
That kind of remains the same, you know, the Department of Health is still leading the healthcare provider kind of in charge, even all the way down to funding.
Okay.
Will things change, we still await those answers, but.
With that being said, are you, when you finish up here, we could just go down to number 10 in the agenda.
Sure.
And that's the cost of supplies, as long as we got you here.
Yep, that's fine, what we're looking at there, and we're pursuing other avenues, Myron, on that, probably the biggest resource on that would be some food, and neighboring county like Brenda Creek, Brookings, their commission is that that is one piece, and one part that they provided was funding for food and maybe some additional supplies for the volunteers. You know, with that said, that's, that's a big resource for us to retain those volunteers on a resource management side and getting the people to, you know, play with us, so that's kind of what I look at, I don't have quite a dollar figure, but we are looking at, as a group, in the healthcare system, we're looking at some other avenues on finding some funding for that. I wanted to put it on there, we don't have to take any action if we don't wish currently, I can put it back on the agenda if we need to, but I think people are going to step up to this and we'll find a resource on our food management side.
Yeah, it's taken care of this week, so.
All the way down to, I'll wait an answer from the state, and see, because we do have a little bit of funding left.
Steve hasn't gotten back to you yet? Yeah, we have $1,599.18 in pod grant funds.
And I will see if we can use those federal funds as far as for this group.
I certainly would have no issue with it, and I know we can't vote, probably don't want to vote on it yet, but I mean, it looks to me like it'd be well spent.
The people that are volunteering for the first week, do they look like they're going to volunteer for successive weeks?
I think that number keeps growing as far as volunteers, so, yeah, it's just a manager, probably a management side of scheduling, you know, we're looking at, currently, these first couple of events are tentatively kind of long, so that'll start at 6:30 in the morning, and end at 6:00 at night to accommodate people's work force schedules for this group 1E, that could change.
How many volunteers do we have?
Last number I heard, last meeting, I think it was roughly about 60. Signed up in our group on the state website, and who we're working with, and the group that has care, so. And I would say that's probably about that number, unless those allocation numbers would really grow, or we'd have to set up more vaccination stations.
One of the things I heard on the news, in fact, I think it was this morning, that some of the people that aren't receiving the vaccination are those that probably need it the worst, they're working and they can't be released from their work to get a vaccination, do we have any issues like that, probably not in South Dakota.
Not, not that we're hearing as much, you know, people are finding that way to get there, and I would, hopefully the employers are encouraging folks, or allotting them time to.
Well, I think extending this to 6:00 till 6:30 at night would really help, you know, generally, most people are done at 5:00 or 5:30 or something like that, that'd help, and 6:30 in the morning, too.
Right, there, there's quite a few in that morning area, I think that lull is going to be that maybe after lunch scenarios.
This one is set up though from 6:00 to 6:00, not 6:30, correct, or 6:30 in the morning, but then 6:00 at night.
Till 6:00 at night.
Yeah.
You know, and with that said, we'll kind of maybe see how the public reacts, we could change that maybe to a 1:00 or 2:00 in the afternoon until 7:00 at night or 8:00 at night, it'll be kind of a moving schedule, I, preliminary thinking.
Cindy, aren't those about the same parameters that we're seeing with voting, you know, busy in the morning, busy in the end, and then a lull after lunch?
Yeah, it probably, I would, I would, yeah, there's going to be a rush at, you know, right away in the morning, it seems like, and then again later in the afternoon, but, but aren't these set up by appointment?
This is appointment only, so there won't be any walk-ins allowed, so if you don't have an appointment.
Is anybody going to be monitoring like the parking lot, do they, do you know if they have people set up for that?
I don't think we're going to use quite a, you know, as smooth as it goes with the appointment style setting.
Okay, maybe Brad.
I'm actually part of the pod as well, I'm the security manager.
Come on down.
Security manager for pod, and I actually went down and I monitored Brookings event, myself and a deputy who's in logistics, and we monitored the Brookings event, and being it's a scheduled event, I sat out there and watched their parking, and it was just like a normal event, it was in and out without any issues. Brookings actually had one security officer involved that was on site just to make sure that there's no mishaps or anything, so.
Well, these people are going to be getting their vaccination, sitting for 15 minutes and then leaving again, so it's going to be like voters coming out and out.
And like I said, it's the nice thing about having it scheduled, it's a scheduled event, so we only have the same amount of number that's constantly coming and going, it's easy to maintain social distancing and work with all the CDC guidelines.
That's probably the biggest moving part on Brad's, my, our side on the county side, is we're, we're logistic to this, with healthcare kind of leading the vaccination process, so.
Sounds like you have it in hand.
I think it'll go very smoothly, really good.
Thanks for your work on that.
Appreciate that.
It takes a, a big team to organize an event like a pod, and many different spokes in the wheel to make it turn, a lot of volunteers.
We're talking about pod one more time, for the people that are listening, or the paper, which is not here, pod representative stands for what?
That is a point of dispensation process.
There you go.
So.
And this is not a pod.
With that said, currently, the state's not using any of those point of dispensation process for pod for administering vaccines, so it is truly, the meaning of it is mass vaccination event in the wording, but, and it'll be offered Thursday, starting Thursday.
Maybe they'll hear this and say, you know, maybe we better reenact it, or whatever.
It's technically not a pod, but it's kind of like a.
Using the concept, call something different.
Just a little different organizational chart with healthcare, stuff, and some of these section chiefs and.
Could be a good model, I mean, they're the experts, and if you can, you know, so, maybe, maybe you have to look at the, I mean, it might mean some changes to the pandemic plan and stuff like that in the future, so.
I foresee a lot of those changes coming down in the future, so.
I would agree with that. See how the state reacts with good current situation.
Thank you.
Jamie, back to the weather spotting, did you send that email out to our community partner?
I did share that on my social media site, and I think we're going to release a PSA kind of on that probably this week, you know, for sure, I kind of like to get a little closer to the target, currently, I have a roster list of weather spotters, that's about 17. So we want to get those folks included, but then offer to the public folks as well, and virtually, that'll be kind of an easy thing, but you do have to register online with National Weather Service.
To take that.
And then record the attendance.
And we are looking for individuals up in the northeast portion of our county.
I would love to see some folks in the eastern half, in that transfer moving north to South Shore area as far as spotters, but we can place spotters wherever, and then a lot of times, I'll rely on a deputy, actually, who's also helping out, typically, they attend those Skywarn classes as well, so.
Just if they're spread thin, it would be nice to have a few more individuals on the east side, so if anyone is interested.
You bet.
All right, anybody else have any questions for Jamie?
Just, just a comment for Jamie, yesterday, Jamie came up to the radio station, gave us a class on severe weather, cooperation with Kelly Sir.
Kelly Sir.
From the National Weather Service Office, so I just wanted to thank him for that, and tell him we appreciate you doing that, so.
And hats off to our surrounding county partners too, that are, could entail in some of this mass vaccination event, that's kind of how our region works, we work collectively and closely together, and.
Get the job done.
So, you bet.
Very good.
Yes, thank you.
So we'll just, item number 10, you want to just left on the agenda going forward, or do you want to?
I think I'll bring it back to you if, if it's needed.
So we'll just take it off for now and then, okay.
I don't think any action should, until we get a little further information.
Yeah.
I didn't have that until yesterday, so we put it on just in case.
Yeah.
I think looking forward, if, if we need to, I just want to make the commissioner aware, if we need to supplement, I think there's a good number in my budget to move it, but if we have to supplement something.
Yeah.
Then hopefully we get agreement on that, so.
Good.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. All right, now we'll move on to the sheriff's report with Brad, good morning.
Everybody should have a copy there, we'll get started with the monthly balance sheet, so the bank balanced the end of February 21 was $4,809.52, then if you jump down, we collected 24, $24 in copy fees, $3,721.2 in sheriff's fees collected, and $475 in warrant fees collected, for a grand total of $4,220.2. If you jump on over to the next page there, Lee's got it pulled up, there you go, load up so everybody can see it, you'll see for February, the sheriff's office responded to 486 cases and calls for service, seven accident reports were completed, 86 warrants were served, 188 civil papers were served in February, and 3,780 transport miles for February. If you jump down to the middle here, you'll see some of our jail activity, and some of our jail numbers, our average daily population for February was 44.43, our high ADP was 58, low was 37, we had 24 people that were on the SCRAM bracelet, 45 people on the twice daily PVTs, and 57 people on the sweat patch, I mean, five, 57 people on twice weekly UAs, excuse me, and five people on the sweat patch, for a grand total of 131 participants on the 24/7 program, and 210 bookings. Our, our numbers in March for our ADP has been creeping up, it seems like we've been in the 50s to mid 50s most of the month here, so be interested to see the incline here in March for our average daily population, when March numbers are, are up, so. If you jump on down to the bottom there, Lee, you'll see some of the fees that we collected, in February, we collected in out-of-county contracts, we collected $12,650, work release was still at zero, as we haven't had that going for a year, 24/7 fees, $6,558.50 were collected, and $2,611 in SCRAM fees were collected, so.
Do you anticipate work release being activated soon or not?
We are looking at a plan of how we can do that safely and try to implement that back into our facility, one of the issues with our facility is we don't have different, as much space to house people that are coming and going separately, we had, just recently, we had, a week ago now, inmates had an opportunity to get vaccinated with the Johnson and Johnson, the one-shot vaccination, and we had, it was a nine out of 53, had the 55 or 53 that day that opted for that, so we still have a vulnerable population that's in the jail, and we kind of have to manage and watch out for as well, so. Those are some things that Chief Corrections Officer Blackwelder and I have been keeping an eye out, trying to come up with a, a plan, we would like to get this up and going, but we want to make sure it's safe to do so.
Say nine out of 53.
Nine out of 53.
Since they're incarcerated, is there any possible reason why we couldn't say you are going to do it?
Well, we kind of looked into that a little bit, when you start dealing with that, you're dealing with attorneys, and it is.
But they're incarcerated.
They're incarcerated.
They lose some of those rights when they're incarcerated.
They lose some of those rights. You're kind of playing.
Be careful there, because innocent to prove guilty, I mean, there's, there's a lot of constitutional issues with.
Just one other thing, Brad, you mentioned they took Pfizer vaccine.
They took the Johnson and Johnson.
Johnson and Johnson, okay.
That's the one shot, yep, yep, so that's a one-time, one in.
From the day, from the day of injection to the day of supposedly you're free or safe or whatever, how many days is that one?
See, that's a little bit.
14, I had that one.
14 days?
14 days.
Is it for the same?
That's what they told me is 14 days, yes.
Does the other one is 21, or?
I think one is, they say recommend 10 days to two weeks, and the Johnson and Johnson, I honestly.
That is the one I got, they said two weeks from the date of the shot, you should be effective.
Let's call Jamie up, he's expert on this.
If you're jailed for two days, you're not going to be, or three days, you're not going to be safe anyway.
Yep.
Yeah, as I understand it, all three vaccines that are offered currently in the state, 14 days.
After the final vaccination, yep, that's what I, I think so.
It's a certain percent after your first dose.
Correct.
After the 14 days, and then after your second dose, and it's that higher after the 14 days.
Yes, yeah, Johnson and Johnson, like you speaking of, I believe, early on, when they announced the release of that, 66% efficiency on your first, or, and the one, on that, but the older generational people effectiveness on that, to keep you off of a ventilator and out of the hospital, was closer to that 90% effectiveness, so.
Right, now they're talking about the variant being in South Dakota too, so that's kind of maybe.
But all three data, Cindy, like Cindy mentioned, 14 days after your second dose, if you're on that Pfizer or Moderna, is where they predict that efficiency side, so you should be 100%?
Yes.
What, just on this, since we're talking, talking about the jail, I'd have to, have to mention, you know, and when we're looking at building a new jail, you know, some of the features of the newer buildings, you have the, you know, you have a, a, I guess, a cell block basically that has an overpressure system, so if you have people that, that are sick, inmates that are sick, you can put them in there, that way you, you low, greatly lower the risk to the rest of the inmate population, and then for the work release, you know, there'd be separate entrances, separate paths to get to the, get to, you know, the space for the inmates, and so that's something that we don't, we don't have, so we got paths crisscrossing everywhere, and you definitely don't have a separate cell block with an overpressure system, so that's kind of, that's kind of the, you know, one of the, one of the challenges that you're dealing with right now, just so people understand that.
The, the overpressure system that Lee's talking about, I actually did some checking on that for CARES Act funds, if that was something that we could revamp our facility, but it did not pan out, so we got shot down, so.
That's all the more reason for what I said, I said, for our protection, everyone should be vaccinated, I'm just saying, you know, to protect those that are already, you know.
And you're dealing with religious issues and everything else, and some religions and, right.
Not force them to do it.
It's a real gray area when you start dealing with inmates on some of that stuff there, so.
They started out L.A.
Yep. That's all I had, unless, I think there was a proposal for cameras.
Yep, so we can do that, item number nine, action to approve purchase of cameras for the detention center, we have Matt and Brad up here, so who is going to fill us in?
Well, like I say, last year, we started the first phase of the camera upgrades, I should say, in the detention center, we did the server, and we did a few cameras, and a little bit of licensing at that time, this is looking at the next phase of that, you can see, it's looking at $39,971 to upgrade 39 cameras, and run new cabling and to, and the licensing to finish out this project, not finish out the project, I should say, get closer to the finish. At the end of this, we'll have about 20 cameras, I think, is what we figured, that we would still need to replace, we're still updating cameras that are still black and white, and been in the facility for, probably the first time they go with cameras.
Clarify that a little bit for the press, which is watching this, or will watch this.
Yep, like I said, we have a long linear jail facility, we don't have the pod set. Yep, like I said, we have a long linear jail facility. We don't have the pod setup, kind of like Lee was talking. And a pod setup, you would have essentially somebody, the core, the brain, the control center, right in the center. And you'd be able to look around and see your whole facility just by a glance. You'd be able to see into all these pods. Our long linear jail, you don't see that. You can walk through our whole jail and not see an inmate because they're back in their cell areas. So these cameras make it essential so we can see in our pod areas to see what our inmates are doing and to be able to monitor and help keep an eye on them. So.
Where some of these original cameras that were replacing be put in.
Some are black and white. Some of them were.
They haven't made black and white TVs or cameras for years.
And having been and visiting some of the newer jails that have the newer cameras, you know, it does make a huge difference. I mean, the resolution. The color. I mean, you just don't see things as well when you're watching a monitor with, you know, who knows how many camera views on it. So.
It was it was just for the general public to understand why we're spending the money.
Like I say, for instance, on the some of the software and this newer camera setup that we have, for instance, outside in our. Outside rec area there, you we have cameras and the software, you can have zones where they can monitor if someone's loitering. Or if someone is near the fence line, it'll pop up and it'll show the correctional officer that's monitoring the cameras at the time that someone's there. And when they're trying to toss illegal substances over to our inmates in there, they we can catch that and identify them a little bit quicker and sooner. So it does have some meat and good things on the software as well. Been able to record and go back and like I say, the resolution is a lot better on these as well.
I'll make a motion to approve purchase of the cameras for the detention center.
Second.
Who got it? Motion by Van Duzen, second by Waterman. This is essential for us, like in cases of individuals who tried to bring us to court. So it's just part of the process. This is a budgeted item, I'm assuming.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just a quick, really quick. So if if we do build a new jail someday, what what do we do with these cameras?
I would, we'd have to work with the contractor and I would think that they would be able to, you know, bring this stuff over to a new facility. Some of the areas in the new facility may need different types of cameras just because of the location where they're at. But I would think they would be able to reuse some of these. And like I say, cameras, like say, they're like to kind of get them on a plan. So we're rotating them out as they start to die. We've had issues now where we're seems like we're constantly calling our person to come. Yeah, they were just here to fix a camera or two that are dying. Those are expenses that we're paying travel back and forth. And so.
Really is a liability for the county to not have a state of the art camera system. I think if you're going to invest anywhere in a detention facility, cameras are where you're going to want to put your money.
Absolutely.
That and personnel. So I'm glad to see that we're moving forth with this. And that cost is good insurance for the county. So.
Well, the so and the main thing is you could move the system over. Maybe the individual cameras might be different, but you could.
Well, and if they're goods, you never know, they could be traded in for something different. So.
I didn't I didn't see it, but do these have a service warranty with them or something like that?
I would assume so. I don't know the how long or whatnot, but I.
I'm not sure.
I don't have an exact answer.
Service contract, whatever the terminology might be correct there.
Well, we don't actually have a service contract for them to come in and continue working on them. Hopefully, once we get it installed, we don't have to have those issues of them come up and repair.
This is a great deal, but I was just curious. So.
They would be like globes, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, some globes, some corner mounts, some different areas of replacing. Yeah.
And it's budgeted.
Yes.
Yep, and it's a budgeted item planned for this year. So.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Get it installed.
Get us updated.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number seven then. And that will be Steve. Well, that's a declare, but we will also do item number eleven. So I guess action to declare the G E N zero one six oh five, a gravity mower surplus to be traded.
So.
Second by Gable. Any other discussion? I guess we had this purchase and this was the trade in, so we need to make it surplus. Anything to add to that, Steve?
No, this is just what was on the disk. It missed in last week's agenda.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. That motion carries. Then let's move on to item number eleven. Action to approve a roofing project at Memorial.
This is an estimate of a roofing project that says it'd be the upper bath house. And this will probably very well cover most all the roads in the in there. There's probably a small shed and stuff. I'll have to have the the storm shelter is actually a flat roof. I'll check in to see how that shape of that one is for future. So yeah, but this is what's a budgeted item, budgeted for this year. So.
Move to approve.
Second by Johnson, second by Gable. Any additions, corrections, comments?
Was it budgeted?
Yes, this was budgeted. Yep.
I'm sorry. Just sorry. Yeah, you probably said it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. That motion carries. All right. I think that takes care of everything we need for you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. We'll go back to item number eight, then. Action to renew employee dental insurance with Delta Dental and approve employee employer costs. Maybe?
We got our renewal premium quotes from Delta Dental. They will remain the same as they were last year. There is no increase. So the motion we would need, if this is what the board wants to do, is to approve the renewal premiums. And maintain the employer employee split of premiums, which currently the county pays a single premium. They pay fifty percent of the two party and fifty percent of the family premium.
So.
Second by Johnson, second by Gable. And that's to leave everything as is.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. That motion carries. All right. Item number twelve. Action to approve abatement applications.
We have three abatement application. All three applicants qualify for an assessment freeze program. So therefore, we do not reveal their names, but it is record number six ninety five. This property is located in. Elmira Township. The abatement, they qualify for an abatement of one thousand five hundred and eighty two dollars and eighty four cents. The second one is record number five five zero six. The abatement is one thousand seven hundred and fifty one dollars and seventy six cents. And the final one is record number nine zero four two. The abatement is one thousand three hundred and thirty one dollars and sixty cents. And like I said, they all have been approved and qualified for assessment programs through the state of South Dakota.
Are they all in Elmira?
No, two are in Watertown. One is in Elmira.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. I'm wondering if this, the information that Shawna mailed out is maybe some of these individuals didn't realize.
Yes, they're.
That this was an opportunity for them. So that was a good, good thing to do.
And actually, yeah, so the reason for it is the applicant missed the deadline and this board is authorized to approve those for anybody who did miss.
For deadline. Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. That motion carries. Item number thirteen. Note, the board's next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April sixth, twenty twenty one, since we have five Tuesdays this month and we will not be meeting next week then. Oh, you're going to miss us, Troy.
I might just come and just sit here.
Put yourself on YouTube.
We have to drum up some new news.
All right. Item number fourteen. Action. Possible discussion on COVID nineteen practices procedures policy. Anybody have anything? I think we're good. Item number fifteen. Action to approve claims for payment.
We have our credit card claims that came in recently. The first one is to Great Western Bank. It is our Visa for the welfare office for the purchase of office furniture. Second one is Visa. I think it's Visa Relia Bank, four hundred and sixty dollars and seventy cents is for the emergency management for miscellaneous supplies. The third one is in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and fifty seven dollars and seventy three cents to Visa Relia Bank for the sheriff and jail miscellaneous supplies.
Move to approve. Second.
By Van Duzen, second by Gable. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. That motion carries. Action to approve automatic budget supplements. Do we have any? Action to approve personnel changes.
We have several of those. First one is a new hire in the treasurer's office, Cecilia Carlson. Her effective date, start date is April first. She'll start at step four, seventeen twenty six per hour. The second one is a correctional officer, a new hire. I don't know. The last name is Cheddar. I'm not sure on that first name, Racelyn. Step one, eighteen fifty four per hour. Start date was March fifteenth. There is a new deputy sheriff that was hired under the COPS grant to start April first, Ryan Elliott, step one, twenty one ninety three. I believe he was a formerly a part time correctional officer. And the fourth one is also a new hire, full time correctional officer, starting April first, Chandler Flowers, step one, eighteen forty four per hour.
Move to approve.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post. That motion carries. Item number eighteen. Action to approve travel requests.
One travel request. It's from the welfare director. It's kind of an open end request, so she can travel to various counties to observe and train. I believe she does have a time set up for travel to Minnehaha County at this time, and then she'll reevaluate and see if she needs to talk to any other counties. It's just kind of a training for her.
Load to approve. Second.
By Johnson, second by Gable. Questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. That motion carries. Item number nineteen. Public notices. A possible form of commissioners could be in attendance at. Do we have any of those? Anyone can think of? Can't think of any. I did sign up for the NACO ledge conference. If there's any of those workshops, I mean, that's something we could do up here if any of you would be interested in taking part of that. So.
When is that? That's next week?
No, it's this week. Like, it winds up. So there's like several tomorrow.
Okay.
So you might want to look. All right. Item number twenty. Old business. Do we have any? Item number twenty one. New business. Anyone have any new business? Anything for the open?
Madam Chair, since we have Steve here, Steve, how are reservations going out at Memorial Park? Can you give us an update on this?
Three, four a day at least.
Okay.
Emails asking how we get to do it. So we had, you know, and asking if they can book into July and that's not the old Philly office owners.
System's working okay, though?
System seems to be working pretty good.
Good, good.
I guess I would just add, went to the county workshop last week and every year, you know, you think you learn something new. So it was, we learned some more really valuable information that it was a very good workshop. So anyway, and our, just so you can jot in your calendars, our county convention is going to be September thirteenth and fourteenth, and it is out in Rapid City. So I'm not sure what the hotel. I don't know if she sent that information out yet.
I believe.
Is where the where the.
You said thirteenth and fourteenth?
Thirteenth and fourteenth.
So it's Monday and a Tuesday?
Yep.
Rapid City?
Rapid City. So, yeah, Ramco is the host hotel. I don't, sometimes she sends out surrounding ones that I don't know how much room there will be.
She did that or not.
I don't know if she's done that. But anyways, just so you put it in your calendars and it's always, it's just always something that you learn and bring home from that. So. All right. Item number twenty three. Any executive session? Any reason to go into executive session?
Move to adjourn.
All right. Got a motion by Johnson, second.
Second.
Second by Gable. Are you sad that we're done already? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. We are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.